Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, December twenty sixth. Like to call the meeting to order. If you please join me with Mr. Lamont of our locations. Welcome.
Good morning. Today is Boxing Day. That is, it is a bank postal holiday in the United Kingdom and most of the British Commonwealth in Western Europe, not including the UK. Today is the Feast of Saint Stephen. And most of Canada, it's a statutory holiday. In some parts of Canada, neither post offices nor banks nor retail business are allowed to be open. In Wikipedia article about Boxing Day, these sentences can be found. The European tradition of giving money and other gifts to those in need or in service positions has been dated to the Middle Ages, but the exact origins unknown. It may reference the alm's box placed in the nartex of the Christian churches to collect donations to the poor. The tradition may come from a custom in the late Roman, early Christian era, wherein alm's boxes placed in the churches were used to collect special offerings tied to the Feast of Saint Stephen. The custom is, this custom may also be linked to an older British tradition where the servants of the wealthy were allowed to take the day after Christmas to visit their families since they would had to serve their masters on Christmas Day. The employers would give each servant a box to take home containing gifts, bonuses, and leftover food. Because this is a traditional day of benevolence, I looked for a scripture text relating to giving gifts, and I came to Psalm one hundred and twelve. And there I found words that seemed to be appropriate for public servants on such a day. Verses four to nine of Psalm one hundred and twelve read, "Light dawn dawns in the darkness for the upright. He is gracious, merciful, and righteous. It is well with the man who deals generously and lands who conducts his affairs with justice. For the righteous will never be moved. He will be remembered forever. He is not afraid of bad news. His heart is firm, trusting in the Lord. His heart is steady. He will not be afraid until he looks in triumph on his adversaries. He has distributed freely. He has given to the poor. His righteousness endures forever. His horn, his dignity, is exalted in honor." There are four words in this verses that seem should guide government at all time: gracious, merciful, righteous, and justice. Another snowflake. Father, thank you for demonstrating and sending Jesus into this world what it means to be gracious, to show mercy, to live righteously, and to grant justice. As these commissioners conclude the year of two thousand and twenty-three and turn to the year two thousand and twenty-four, may they act with graciousness, mercifully, and righteousness, and apply justice in all their agendas. As the calendar changes, may their zeal and determination to exercise good government be renewed and strengthened. May they be mindful of what it takes to make this county a good and productive place to live. May they have the courage to correct matters that are wrong and the wisdom to guide us in what is proper. In Jesus' name I pray.
Please ring in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Public comment? Page nine, we will table the minutes to next week. Mr. Comments? Commissioner Rivas?
We had a great Christmas and forward to a new year. Beyond that, the weather was nice to us, I think. You so far? Yeah. Wish you everybody a continued safe holiday.
Um, new business. We will have T S Connor in fifteen. So until then. You want to go ahead and?
Yeah.
Yeah. Joe Snyder wrote in, superintendent for a utility permit in the Department of Labor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shane Hanky came to me, and they're wanting to fill in a ditch on the county right away and with their, working with theirs to drain. I told him he had to have a utility or a permit signed by the commissioners. He's going to use some of our clean bricks and rock and a concrete that's been dumped at the landfill and put it in the ditch as he does his. And we're going to supply that, and if they need any truck hauling, we will help with that. He did submit, I asked him to, when they're working around our culverts, there's some of it need lined with some rock that they are going to charge, as I think the quote is like thirteen hundred dollars. This is on three tenth road. North of K seven goes by Rollins. It'll be on the north side of there probably. And they're wanting to work with us. And I'm willing to work with them. They didn't at first didn't see any need to get paid for what they were doing for us, but I felt like that that's what it should be. So there is an erosion problem. Here's the map. It's ditch shaping on the north side of the street tenth between K seven and Pratt, filling in the deep pitch, full line grade, and lining culvert with river. So I just need that to be approved by the county, and he will do the dig safe. Do you have any questions? This is, you know, this is one of the few things, you know, we've had a couple other people, landowners come to us.
If there's any utilities that need to be moved?
He has, well, there's, there's, he has to do, yeah, he has to do the dig safe. And there, we're not talking about, I don't think you should have to move any, any utilities.
Look for a motion to approve the Atchison County right-of-way permit application as presented from our Road and Bridge Superintendent for Hanky excavating. Have a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes through the zero.
A wall of spins.
There is a, we're a mile there, and they're going to work on their ditches. They're going to do some, I think maybe some tiling and embarrassing also, but where it comes into the, to the culvert, they're, they're going to fix all that. And then, like I said, the one ditch is deep, and they're going to fill that in with our our waste that we have at the landfill. And I've already talked to Jody there about all of that, so he so he's aware of it. So whenever the weather's.
Public, private.
Yeah. Yes, yes. And that's, that's a nice to be able to work with people like that. As far as department update, we're still working on two ten. The weather's kind of going to slow us down with as muddy as it got and everything, but we'll still continue to work on trees and get our snow equipment out today and see how everything's working and continue to work on the roads. And we've got some bridges that we're, we're going to have to address. A little trouble with AT&T right now. Trying to get a hold of them to get a line moved so we can strengthen up a small wooden culvert. It's a wooden bridge, but it's a culvert. Either that or we have to pull it out and put a culvert pipe in it on the two. Because it did not go well on our inspection. He, when Arnie inspects our bridges, if he comes up with something, he gets a hold of us immediately if it needs it. And this was not on our bridge inventory or culvert inventory, this particular one. So we'll be adding some of those as we go. And Garrett's still, when he gets back, he's on vacation, he'll continue to inventory all of our culverts. So.
When you have a new culvert located and it's not been on our inventory, how is it numbered or how does it?
So there is a, there is a numbering system that goes off your north and south, a lettering and numbering system that goes off your north and south and your east and west roads for that area in the county.
Bridges.
So, yes, it's so like Anderson and it's like two seventy-eighth. You know, Anderson, if you go so far up Anderson, you use this number. It's like from zero to five or five to zero. I can't remember exactly, but there is, we've got it wrote down because I asked that same question. How do we number this when there's never been a number before? Now, those are the ones that are, that we keep for the inventory for the bridge inspections. That's how we number them. So that's how we do it.
Also have all them in your spreadsheet. The year it was added to the inventory?
Well, when we, when we send it to GIS, it's puts the date that we've inspected and what we've done. So this one will, this one will go to GIS because it's a new.
Yeah.
It's new, so it will have the date that it was inspected, so that will be the, the original date that we have.
That's date added, but it's not as a date built?
No, and a lot of them, there's no, I mean, I don't know how you would ever.
Estimate.
Yeah, and I don't know if, I don't know what happened for it to be that way. I just know that that's, that's how it is.
That would be interesting to know, like after how many you were added on. We are actively looking for them now, adding them to the lists. And not that I wouldn't want to spend tons of time on it, but I didn't know whether.
But it is something that we do need to know because how do you budget for the unknown?
Can your inspector give you an estimate? Like, it was probably built between nineteen fifty and sixty-five or so.
Oh, I suppose on those, I suppose, I suppose you can. But there's some that, there's some these under twenties. I think there's around a hundred of them now. It was ninety-three. That we don't, we haven't inspected because we don't know, I mean, they're there, but we don't, they're not in the inventory. Does that, I don't know if that makes sense.
Didn't make sense.
Well, that part doesn't.
Right.
But, but that, it is that way. And probably years ago, there probably wasn't inventory, but we've looked through everything and we can't find. That's why we're redoing it. Roger's been good help on that and through the KAC, talking to Keith Browning and everybody, it just comes since, you know, what we have and what we're responsible for and what condition they're in. And it will take a while. It will take a while to get this accomplished. So any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Have a great day.
We're a few minutes early, but Tim Connor and Mathias Connor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mark and Gal doesn't want to go anywhere. Just a, just a little, how you do?
Down and round, please.
That's nice.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. She likes the layout process and I try not to argue with her. But now I'm not going to force you guys to go through every little bit. This is mostly, these are just excerpts from the overall report and for, sorry.
To the extent that you're going to talk about any security concerns, you may want to consider going into executive session for a discussion.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know how that's, at what point do we jump into that or restart?
Do you have a general overview discussion?
It's a general overview. The, the, what are your concerns as far as any specific security or just security in general?
Well, certainly we wouldn't want to tell somebody who might be interested in doing harm to us. Here's a vulnerability to go.
Then we should go in executive session immediately.
That would be my recommendation.
That, just because of some of the some of the things, and yeah, just because there are, there are some areas that if nefarious individuals were made aware of things, then, yeah. So, yeah, that would be my recommendation, but I don't run this committee. You guys do.
Every day in the news, somebody else gets.
It, it's every single day. Absolutely.
Right, our news. Who all would be involved? Three commissioners, Pat, yourself.
IT Director.
Wes.
Hello there.
You did make it.
I did.
Is there anyone else?
Took me off. So you said the IT Director, I turned around, hey, there's Wes.
We penciled in an hour and a half. How long?
I, I think we should be able to get done sooner than that. And Wes, I can get all the full stuff over to you. Am I looking the right way to be on the camera? I don't know if I can. I don't know if he's looking my ear or not. Okay, there he is. Anyway, I've, I've got all the full reports that I'll share with you on everything, and so you, you've got it. So.
Hour, hour fifteen, what?
I, I, hourish. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, one hour. And I've got the security template, so I will move the board of county commissioners recessed into executive session for one hour. The subjects to be discussed during the closed-door executive meeting are matters relating to security measures that protect the information system of the county. The justification for the closed meeting is that discussion of such matters is at an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures, as is authorized by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B twelve C. The board will come out of executive session in one hour in a commit, county commission meeting room in the basement of the courthouse, and those present will be three commissioners, Pat Henderson, excuse me.
Tim Connor.
Tim Connor, sorry.
E O N A R.
Tim Connor. And IT Director Wes Leonard.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes through the zero. We will head into executive session.
And I hope this is.
Okay, we are back in open session. We're going to take a quick restroom break and then go extend our current executive session.
All right. So I'm in charge now. There you go. Here's how things will be. Mary, we are beginning to extend an executive session for another thirty minutes.
Oh.
So you know.
Yeah, I was just getting ready to say too.
I'm not talking fast enough.
Okay.
Not for much longer though. With the newspaper, not for very much longer.
Fast enough. You say that right.
Tiring. Next couple of days, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, Friday. Her retirement party. Yeah. Her receptions tomorrow.
With the holiday calendar and different things happening that are not normal every day of the year, it's, I don't know what day it is, you know, it's it's going to be on the calendar.
Yeah, the, I was I was trying to, you know, just determine what I was going to print, what I wasn't of everything, and I was still going back and forth, and it wasn't until I went back to the office about nine o'clock on Christmas Eve and, okay, this is what I'm going to just get it done. The, because some, some of this is kind of a back and forth because this one's, this one's a bit different because a lot of times we're coming in to displace someone, but we've got a partnership with the Atchison County IT, who has everybody in. You know, this is a this is more of a.
Check it.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's not a we, we weren't called in to replace, so.
I can compare with some of the, how CPA's down, my senior CPA, retired. And I don't say, well, that's a great system they use.
Right.
And as we appear with you. Start the period they use.
Yeah. And, and that's something that.
We're coaching up.
Right. Yeah. Well, and in the, in the IT industry, one of the challenges sometimes is geek pride, you know?
Everything.
Yes. But, but you know, when, when you're, when you come from the
Sorry, I'm just wanting to get, we're ready to extend thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes? Have you voted?
No, we're waiting on you to make a motion.
Oh, all make a motion that we extend for thirty minutes the previous executive session. I say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes through the zero. We'll go back in for thirty minutes.
Okay.
Just wait and vote. She's.
Or is this just same you recommend?
Well, th- this is something that we can provide. And the, these are basically services that we can provide in it is a form of co-managed, yes. But thi- this is just a few pieces of the, of the greater pie. This is, when I, when I looked at the environment, what can we do? What can we offer as, in a, in a partnership with Atchison County? These are, these are the pieces that most stick out to me as providing the most value. So if, and just if we, just for talking sake, if we were to look at a fully managed, and I haven't gone through every little nook and cranny, because believe it or not, this was just a cursory review. The if we were to look at a fully managed setup, we'd probably be somewhere in the area of twenty-five to thirty-five thousand a month to fully manage everything. All right.
All right.
Okay, no. Any last questions? All right.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And my card's in there. If you guys have any questions, you know, Wes definitely knows how to get a hold of me and just kind of go from there. Y'all have a.
You'll be following up with him.
Yes. Yeah, I've, I've got to go blind, make him go blind on all these reports. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Y'all have a, hope you had a merry Christmas and a happy New Year coming up. You know, thank you for the treats.
Yeah, thank you.
Enjoy. Y'all take care.
We are back. A little early. The folks from PHD went on, or if Lindsay, you want to give us any things? Pointers on looking through this with them? Did you guys have a chance to review those reports?
I, not, not to the depth I wanted.
Right.
It's too crazy.
So I guess I just want to have a better understanding of. All right, I'm just, you know, you're, see if they're ready. I think. So when we came up that day, Mark and Pat and I, and we saw a report of the six hundred. So is part of that our internal staff collections only part of its PhD or PhD that's all of it? No, that's like the whole aging report. Yep, yep. So that's why I sent you guys the portion. That's yours. Okay. Yeah. So your portion is that, and then this PHD is separate. Like the line of the interns. Yeah. So the seventy-eight, two seventy-seven is PHD. Okay. And then it was like two hundred and something was ours. Yes. Sorry, I'm trying, oh, you're fine. I thought I had to do this stuff that I didn't have. Hey, Lindsay, if you want to come on up. So the aging report that was sent to us end of November or November twenty-second showed three hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents of the zero to ninety. And then two seven, two hundred and seventeen thousand one fifteen eighty-three, which we thought we couldn't collect, but we can up to three hundred and sixty-five days, correct?
I've got the December twentieth. That's what, yeah, I've got December, December, November.
Yeah, this is the one that she's like the three. The one she just in. Yeah. Okay. So do you have?
Well, twenty, twenty-three. That's good. I've got.
Atchison. Okay, four fourteen. Okay. So I haven't totaled that one. Basically four hundred and fourteen thousand somewhere. If it's three hundred and sixty-five days.
Let's go see your last page in just a second. I'm going to prepare my factors. I think the same.
Yeah. It, it's the one that. Good news if, because it went down strictly from the last one you. Kirsten, she had some deposits and stuff that she had to. Perfect. She should be on.
Should I pull up the same old or the newer?
The newer one, probably, right? Yeah, this is the most current one that she, that they were working on last week to get to Atchison. But not Atchison's, just PHD's portion, right? Um, you'll be giving an update on Atchison's? Yeah, so when I did our aging report last week, that was as of Saturday. Okay. Okay, so PHD's only responsible for basically seventy-eight thousand, and Senior Village is four hundred and fourteen. Oh. Can you guys hear me? Yes. Okay, so the PHD portion is a seventy-eight thousand dollar one. The full aging with the four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar amount, that is the full aging. So that is Atchison's portion and our portion put together. Thank you. Sorry, and if you want to introduce yourself, I'm Casey Quayle, the district recommissioner.
I'm second district Eric Knoll.
I'm number one, Alan Rivas.
I'm Kirsten Weigel. I work for PhD billing and consulting or consulting and billing. I do all of your guys' Medicare billing, all of that portion. I send out your guys' private statements for you. I work underneath Darcy. She is the owner. She is super sorry she can't be on here today. She had kind of a family emergency, unfortunately, but I do buy your, all of your guys' billing for Atchison. So if you have any questions for me, I am definitely glad to help or answer any other questions. And if there is any questions that I do not know, I will forward those on to Darcy. And she will be able to better help if it's a deeper dive question that you guys have.
This is probably a good place to say, if you're going to talk about individual residents, then this is something that should be in executive session. If you're going to have the kind of mile-high overview, that could certainly be in public. So these totals that you talked about, that's fine. It doesn't identify any individual resident, but. So these totals that you talked about, that's fine, it doesn't identify any individual resident, but if you want to talk about individual accounts. You should go into executive session under KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B five.
What do you guys want to do?
This would be, this would be first, I think, if in public.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, so I don't know if you want to do your part, or she. Uh, basically, we just can't divulge names, but we can talk about like the overview of four hundred and fourteen thousand, it looks like. Uh, what part of that is, is PhDs, the seventy-eight, cause you sent us a separate report with just yours, right?
Correct, yes, yep. Yep, and then we, then Darcy, or then I attached kind of a breakdown of all of those balances. Um, kind of like what we're working on, uh the deposits and all of that stuff. Um, so if you have any questions as far as those go, um please let me know.
Are you collecting up to three hundred and sixty-five days, or how late can you collect some of this um outstanding debt? Or balances?
Um, as far as. The um. Like you mean like are the ones that were actively trying to collect, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so just to get a better understanding of what you're actively trying to collect of the total seventy-eight thousand. If you could just kind of walk us through like your process and what your priority is to get collected and how that's working.
Yeah, for sure, um so out of the seventy-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and that's just kind of a rounded number, no sense wise. Um, we took off six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars of managed care fees.
Sorry, sorry, one second, it's the PhD portion of the aging, the second attachment?
What's the date of the email, cause I'm not finding.
Okay, sorry, here, I'll forward it to you guys, yeah, it was from twelve twenty-one of twenty.
Twelve twenty-one.
Yeah, here, I'll send it right now, so you all have it, if you want to follow. Yeah, she sent it, watch her. And if the, oh, you open the PhD portion at the bottom is seventy-eight thousand two seventy-seven thirty.
You see it's PhD portion?
Yep.
Second attachment.
And then I'm just gonna read directly from that email that I sent, um kind of the breakdown of it, if you want to follow along.
Okay.
Let me know when you guys are ready.
Are you guys ready?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so of the seventy-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, uh we have six thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars in managed cares for November. Um, those were just billed in the beginning of December, so we don't count those towards it. Uh, towards being able to collect because they're most likely just now getting on file with the, the insurance agencies. Um, same with the three thousand nine hundred and twenty-two IXBs of October and November. Um, the reason for October is because the November claims most likely just paid in the middle of. Uh, sorry, the October claims likely paid at the end of November or mid-November, so those. Oc- those uh co-insurance claims didn't get billed until the end of November, beginning of December, just depending on when. They were paid by the co-insurances, um November, same thing, we didn't bill Medicare until the beginning of December. Most of the Medicare claims got paid this last week sometime, and so then a lot of them crossed over to their co-insurances, so we don't count those. Same with the twenty-six hundred for IXA, um co-insurance A claims for October and November. Um, MCA of Nov- or managed care A for November, don't count that because we didn't bill until the beginning of December. Um, and then hospit, same with Medicare B, and then hospice as well for November. So those are kind of, we directly take those out of that, that portion of it because they're not technically due yet per se. Um, so that brings that total down to fifty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars to be paid. Minus the twenty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars um sitting in deposits or sitting in. The open batches to be deposited, they just haven't been um claimed yet from the courthouse kind of thing, or we haven't received the checks yet. Um, so that brings the total down to two thousand eight hundred or two tha- twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars of actual total. Um, from PCC, um and in that email you see sort of, I don't want to see, say like our problem children, but. The ones that were having issues with getting um paid for you guys, um and there's notes on them. Uh, and like you said, we could, we can't really go into det- detail on names, but. If you have any questions on those, those are kind of explained a little bit in the email and on, if you want a. The, on the email, the. Issues that I listed out, those are just like a quick glance, if you have more questions on it. If you go to the resident on the aging, it's spelt out and it's more explained better on the aging in the notes.
And so, which is like the big, it's on, it's an attachment online email.
Forgive me, sorry, I have.
No, you're fine.
But I just kind of want to understand the process from, from your email, so um. The. Ones that are listed um as, as older ones for twenty twenty-three. Um, what is your process of collecting those, are you working with someone inside the building to have like a more um. Intimate approach, or do you send uh billing statements, or, or kind of what's your collections process to work with these? To get caught, caught up?
So we were, so our process is say, for that first one, we have a. Issue with it being stuck in the escalation team with the review, so we call the insurance companies directly. And say, and fight for your guys' money per se, um so we're calling. Every time we do an aging review, uh calling and saying what's going on with this claim, why is it still stuck in this? When I called the last time, you told me the same thing, I need to talk to a supervisor, that's why when you see like the escalation. We take it as far as like talking to a supervisor, if we can't get through to a supervisor, or if we can't get. The answer that we're looking for, or the answer that we know we can get, we take it to that next step. We want to talk to the highest-up person that we can, um. I don't want to say the problem that we're seeing, but a lot of these insurance companies are going to. Not having customer services, customer service representatives, they're all through the portal. Um, which I'm, I know you guys have probably all called and dealt with something that has the IVR or a portal. And it's not always user-friendly, um so we're really trying to get these uh claims paid. But working with these insurance companies has shown time and time again that it's. It's getting harder in that aspect of working with them, but just know we are actively working. Um, working with provider reps that we can get, um I have sent out, like you can see a couple of these um. Optum, which UHC went to a third party called Optum, um Lindsay knows about Optum. And we were not aware, made aware that Optum was a thing, so we kind of had some issues with getting claims on file. Because UHC was saying that they were forwarding to the Optum provider, well, that was never getting done. Um, so we had to go back through and figure out all of those claims that were sent to Optum. And then rebuild them and fight to get them paid. So that's kind of um our portion of it, we bill it out. If we notice that they aren't getting paid, we follow up with them.
And then the amount at the bottom of your email with the balance, um that are claims prior to PhD. When did PhD come on board with Senior Village?
Um, July of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. And so the claims prior to you guys, then you're not actively working on or where you are?
Um, working on claims prior to PhD that we've noted for write-offs. Myself, no, um, but that can include. I do not do you guys' Medicaid billing. Um, that I believe a lot of those balances are from Medicaid. Let me, so that is definitely something that I will reach out to Darcy on. Um, and I see like prior to PhD that we've noted for write-offs. Um, so let me reach out to Darcy on that one, um.
I'm sorry, did she say that we don't do the Medicaid billing?
Yeah, she said she doesn't.
Okay.
I personally do not do the Medicaid billing.
Okay.
Um, somebody else in PhD does do the Medicaid billing.
Okay, and that's what I was trying to understand too, of just the process, so your company. Does beginning to end on all Medicare and Medicaid billing also.
Yes, yes, sorry.
The wrong authorization is given for billing, is that from our team or from your team? Like, just to understand.
Um, yes, I see what you're saying now, sorry, um, we do, we do not, PhD does not get the authorizations. Um, that is an app, that Atchison, somebody in Atchison does that, um, upon admission. Um, so.
So the prior. Are for people who are like, don't have traditional Medicare, there are people that have managed. Which, anyone that we have in-house right now that has managed, we tried to reach out to their POAs and get them to switch. Because prior to like, so the last two people that we've accepted from Amberwell that needed to do like a rehab stay. You have to call whatever managed company they are, submit diagnosis code sent from the hospital. And then they basically get to dictate like how many days they're at their, at your facility before you have to send in new like. Nursing notes, rehab notes, all of that to say like, yes, you're going to be granted another five or seven days, and then you have to get reviewed. So we, but we can't even accept them until we get an authorization code from that insurance. And I just learned that process because Sam was off one day. And um Amberwell needed placement for a person and, but it does take time, like I, they like were trying to. Start to figure out like on Friday, on a Friday, like get authorization, and I was working on it like pretty much from noon. Until like seven with the hospital to get all the stuff that they need in order for them to give us an authorization code. Or sometimes their managed insurance is not like in network with Atchison Senior Village, so then we don't ever get an authorization code. So then obviously, we wouldn't accept them because we know we're not going to get payment for it.
Lindsay, these are the Medicare Advantage plans.
Yes.
Yes.
So like UA. Yeah, there is no advantage, other than they, they, they state. They state that they like keep you out of the hospital, and that's because when they go to the hospital, instead of like admitting them, then they keep them under observation. So then they don't get like their three midnights and um, and so then they're sending them home with home health. You know, and different things like that, which is paid for versus going the other route. So it does like their premiums to people like that are paying for them, instead of paying traditional Medicare, it costs more per month. To have traditional Medicare, but in the long run, if you have an illness or you get sick and you need to go to the hospital and then get sent to rehab. Then it takes all of this guesswork out of there, you just have to have your three midnights, but the premiums are cheaper per month. So that's why it's appealing to some people to utilize the managed care until you get into a situation where.
I've been hearing nothing but nightmares from the Advantage Plans, because I deal with the. Uh, Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department, their health and hospice, they are having to turn down patient after patient for hospice care. Because they do not cover hospice care, so their numbers have went down because they, they don't get paid for.
And it's because they essentially don't get that prior authorization.
And also dealing with their agency on aging, the same, I brought up. The, the previous thing I just said about the Multi-County Health, as soon as I said Advantage Plans, you know, everybody erupts, you know, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
It's chaos within it, so.
Multiple friends have issues with it.
So getting those authorization codes takes like up to forty-eight to seventy-two hours, so like. The one that I did, I started working on on Friday, and then they were calling me at like six o'clock that night saying we need this information. So then I had to call the hospital to have them fax it, and then luckily by Monday morning, we did have the authorization code, so. I know.
Sorry, and to add to that point of it, just because you got, and what we've seen quite a bit, not just with Atchison, but with other. Facilities that we do billing for, that just because you get an authorization number, doesn't mean that it's always approved. Um, and some, and they're not always great about sending out a notification, so it takes us billing it. Us getting a denial, saying authorization was not for see, or not approved or whatever, and so we have to reach out and say, well, I have this authorization number. Yeah, we see that you guys started it, or you guys finished it, but it wasn't approved, so. It's, yes, that I can, I, it's just, their Advantage Plans are not. As advantageous as what people think they are.
Okay, approved, when you said it wasn't approved, that was, who, who had to do that final approval? That.
So they get to choose, so the, you, the insurance companies get to pretty much say that whether it's approved or not. Um, and they don't always, and they're not always great about sending out a notification that it's been approved. Um, so she's getting a, go ahead Lindsay, sorry.
They, we get that first authorization number saying like, yes, they will accept it. And then they tell us like you have a review in like three days, five days, whatever, so then that's when Sam. Gathers all the nursing notes, the therapy notes, send it back in, and then they basically tell us like. You're not getting a, you know, you're getting denied or approved, and then your next review date is on this time. So it's like, we're basically doing, we're at the mercy of them giving them therapy, and we just, or to allow. For us to bill for them to have therapy, and so we're, when we take someone that's managed, we pretty much know that this isn't going to be like a. This is probably going to be like less than, you know, seven to ten days is probably what they're going to potentially get approved for before they're. Denied and kicked out the door, depending on what they come in.
So the main, main thing that's on here is, I've been involved at state level and federal with this, there's a difference between prior authorized and pre-approved. It's the different, it sounds like the same thing, there's games they play with this, and so, yeah, you're right, you can be authorized and never get paid. It's, it's, it's a bad system. Our solution is.
When you find out, let us know.
A lot of work going on there.
So you do um billing probably for other long-term care facilities as well. Um, based on the timeline, were you introduced to us when we were under a new management care?
Yes, okay, I was, yes.
I guess for, for me of trying to understand what's best for our facility, and I would love your input on this of. Um, I know when you're a company, probably like in sign or new, when you have, you know. Several facilities that you have collections and Medicaid billing and all the things, uh utilizing an outsourced resource as yourself, um. Makes sense, right? It's efficiencies and partnerships and all the things, I'm wondering with the balance and the summary. Do you feel that someone such as At- Atchison Senior Village for these is better to? Is better to have someone in-house um. Doing it or are you, cause you have a point of contact, right?
And. Yeah, I work with Sam and Lindsay.
Okay, so Business Office Manager, which over the past few years, we've seen, you know, that role come and go. So I'm assuming it was difficult for you. Um, to stay in contact when we don't have someone in that role. Uh, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're having the right decisions and discussions and. Breaking it out, your portion, cause I, I guess my understanding was that you were doing all of our collections of, of the whole. Shebang of the four hundred and some, you know, and so it was easy to be like, we need to talk to you and figure out.
Right, for sure, no, I.
You're only doing that minimal portion of it. So I'm just trying to understand like. For just our facility, now that we're not part of the new group, does it make? Would you suggest having someone in-house tackle these few? Or or not? I just kinda wanted your opinion as a professional in the industry.
When you say tackle these few, are you talking, saying like tackle the ones that we're handling or tackle?
Yes, ma'am.
Your portion. Um, so. For our por- sorry, go ahead.
Or to, to your, do you do other people's portions too? Like, I guess, I don't know how, how that looks or the contractor with the monthly obligation or if you get a percentage for what you. Like, I don't know any of those things, so I'm just trying to understand better of.
Right, I see what you're saying. So as far as our portion, um. We are very dedicated to collecting our portion of it. Um, and I, I truly believe that your aging shows this. Uh, now that you're, now that you know that what our portion is.
Yes.
Um, your guys' aging. And I've done, I do. First, I want to say that we are no longer with the new facilities. Um, we backed out from them.
Okay.
Um, we took our business away from them, um, just. I'm assuming a lot of things that you guys handle or dealt with with them, we were seeing a lot of the same things. Um. So we do now no longer work with a new, um. But your guys' aging looks. Incredible, um, compared to some of the other facilities that we deal with on our portion of it. Um. I think a lot of, and then to on to your question of do we handle other people's portion or not other people's but. Like the private pay collections and that side of it. We as PhD do not. Um, that is a lot of in-house stuff. Uh, we don't call the um. The, I don't, what do you wanna call them? The beneficiary or not the beneficiaries, but. The POAs, yes, sorry. We do not call them, just in the fact that. In the, the, their resident or their family members are in the facility, we don't. We don't personally know them. They wanna see, they wanna talk to somebody personal. Um, personal with their loved one. Um, so we do not do the private pay collections. We do do your billing for private pay statements. Um, we offer that. Um, and so on that portion, we, I will say though, we have had. Where it's something where if Sam has a question with a private pay, we dive deep into getting it fixed. So we do fix it. Fix it on, on the, the backend. But on the front end where Sam is having to, or Sam or Lindsay is having to talk to the residence family. Um. That's kind of them, but I will say I have been on a call with the family. Um, a couple of times and kinda help talk through it. As far as that kinda stuff goes, but um as far as private pay collections, we, that's not a service that we um. Supply, I guess, if you wanna say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have questions for PhD?
And like on here, like the, a lot of or some of it is that Medicaid. Pending and no level of care, which are things that Sam has submitted. Because they were things that weren't submitted. Whenever whoever was the Business Office Manager was before. So we've tried to go back and correct all the things that either weren't turned in or missing with CanCare. So we have everything in that we can to try and get things corrected, but it's just stuff that. Was left undone or completely finished from start to end from the past.
So it sounds like right now we have a good team in place to kinda clean up. As much as we can, yeah. Because a lot of this. Is from either mistakes or not the right authorizations or all the things.
Or like they just, you know, lots of it is the Medicaid no level of care. So whenever. They got Medicaid approved, then there's like that twenty-one, twenty-six form and then it has to state that they're like nursing home. Um, like level and some of that wasn't turned in, so Sam has read. You know, gone in and fixed or found faxes saying, yes, we did turn this in. This is the fax confirmation on this date and this time. So. And then we do. The last couple of months I haven't been on, but we did like before they were never doing like a monthly. Call with PhD and so either Sam or myself does that with them now. So we do kind of review stuff at least once a month. Um, and then if there's, you know. I feel like, you know, I've talked to you recently, the past week or so, but prior to that, most of the communication is between Sam. And you guys.
And I will say from where we started, when we started Lindsay doing the aging calls to where we are now. It's been. It looks so much better. Um, and then to kind of. Build off of her, the Medicaid no level of care is Medicaid pendings. The collections process on that, um. We are getting somewhere. I know right now it does not look the best. But we are getting somewhere with it. Um, Sam is constantly emailing me um updates that she's working with. The CanCare and K-Dads, um. They're not the easiest people to work with. They're. So there's two syst- I don't know if you guys are aware, but there's two systems. And you have to rely on them to communicate. Um, and so they don't always communicate the best. So Sam has people that she's working with. And Lindsay have people that they're working with and communicating with that, um. They are trying, they are trying.
Holding them accountable by saying, yes, we did fax it and here's the fax confirmation and the day and the time and documenting like. If Sam's making a phone call to CanCare or K-Dad, she's putting that in like the. So like on the one, I didn't print it off, but on the one that she sent that has the aging report where it breaks it out by each person, then there's like notes that you can add. So like they add notes in, if they make phone calls, Sam will add. In notes, so there's like notes kind of documentation. So then, yeah, so then everyone can kinda see like. Who called where on what date to try and get some resolution to this.
Document, document, document.
Yeah.
You have to. This is great.
Yeah, so.
And historically, it was told to us that we could only collect up to ninety days, um.
In arrears?
Yeah, but um.
Is that for Medicaid?
That's for Medicaid.
Okay, but I had a constituent with a conflicting story to that. And they, they were, cause there's people, you know, watching what we're doing and they're like, actually you can collect up to three hundred and sixty-five. Days. And so I was just curious if that's the case. So when we're looking at these aging reports, we can be more hopeful to know that. Just because it's outside of that ninety-day window, there's, there's still possibility of it.
We're kind of at their mercy. Um, so Medicaid can. Pretty much say either it's ninety days or they can grant it. I've seen it where it's been granted up to six months. Um, so we're very much at their mercy of what. They wanna do. I don't know the system. I don't know the program that they use to determine whether it's. Three months in arrears or if it's the six months, but it's.
And like I said. The letter saying like you are approved and this, the start date of approval is on this, you know, like this time. Cause we did have a couple. That was accepted last year and then um. They were, it was outside of the three months and we did get paid for like their entire time there, but there's no guarantee, I guess is what it's saying. So it's like. A shot in the dark. Best to, that's why we have, like anyone that's Medicaid pending, you know, we, we had eight, I think, when I started. Um, and now we even have one that. Um, so we've just made sure that they filled out the. The Medicaid app because there were people that had been there for over a year and their Medicaid application was still not even submitted. So. Sam has done a lot of work to get people's families in there and getting um their application filled out. And she actually prefers for them to come in and sit down versus, you know, because they'll send. A denial and say, we need, you're denied because of this reason and we need this, you know, like documentation. And even if they send it in, then the family has like a window, so they'll say we need this by this date. Well, if they don't get it sent in by that date, then. They're denied and then it's like you're starting all over again. So. She pretty much now has the family come in with all the documents that are needed and they go over it and then she mails it.
Not really, I will think since we're going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, yes, very much so in the right direction. And Sam, I wanna say, Sam and Lindsay have both been. Excellent to work with. We love working with them. Um. They're very timely on their answers back to us. We. We're getting somewhere now. Um, and like I said, the aging calls have been with them, have been spectacular. The notes that you guys, after you guys get done with your meeting, you guys. Feel free to go through those notes and just look and see that we are truly trying and Sam has um. Notes in there as well. The created by Deham is the one that we're putting in. Um, but yeah, I. It's been great to work with these guys and now you guys too, so it's been, it's been awesome.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for all the information and helping us better understand and answer the questions, Gus.
Yeah, and I, if you have any other questions, I know I didn't really super go into depth um on how like what our billing process looks like. I could definitely do that too. Um, start to finish for the. Month that we guys do, since we do guys bill for uh Medicare and. So like November, we just build in the beginning of December. Um, kinda stuff. So if you guys have any questions on that, definitely let us know.
Sounds good. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Have a good one.
Thanks.
Um, now like, um, so. The patient liability and the private pay are pretty much the ones that I summed up. In that email that I sent last week. Um, in regards to like if they were behind, why they're behind, when they're gonna get caught up, that sort of thing, cause um. I'm the one that made all those calls last week. Um. So.
Those are tough calls. I appreciate that you did.
Yeah, well, and it's just like, I mean. I, I mean, I guess if you guys, I mean, there are some people that I'm like, you know, with the potential for the sale. I've just told them, you know, like we need to get things buttoned up and we're on track and that there haven't been people in the past that have, you know. Had to make these calls, but I, you know, like, there is a point where if there's not some sort of resolution, then we can issue like. A thirty-day.
Collectives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eviction notice. I mean, I haven't. Done that, but I mean.
Well, it's, it's real simple. You gotta, you gotta pay.
Yeah.
You gotta, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and some of them, I don't think, some of the POAs, because like if they are Medicaid and they have like a. Patient liability, so anyone that's Medicaid has a patient liability. Portion that they have to send in to pay because. You know, you send all of their financial information to the state, so they know how much they take out. Plus how much they have left over because then they only leave them with sixty-two dollars. So some of these families that are like. We don't have the money to pay the patient liability. You do, because that's, that number isn't set by us. That number is set by Medicaid. And they know how much you're getting every month. So what the families or people are doing with this money, I have no idea, but they should have enough money to pay their patient liability. Plus have sixty-two dollars.
But do they sign that off where it comes to you directly?
Um, so a rep payee, so Sam has done that with. Anyone and everyone that we can get to do that, but the family has to approve it.
Uh, we thought it had a requirement. If you're gonna be here, you have to do it that way. Most of them do it that way, you know, I mean, that comes to the nurse.
Um, we, like I said, Sam has. Yeah.
Mother.
Yeah. So far, it's not a requirement at Atchison Senior Village. Um, but she did go through and there were some people that like we weren't getting anything from and so she did send in the paperwork. And then like the family basically gets notified and then. They have to, cause there were some people that have been up there and their family never comes to see them and then we weren't seeing a check and then trying to get ahold of someone to get. So then we just made, Sam made herself the rep pay.
I know in the past, that when someone entered and they, basically, don't they sign an agreement that they will? If, if they maybe have some assets, but they have to redo all of reporting and send it out to get on Medicare. And then Medicaid.
Yeah.
So then. Uh, but once they got in the facility, the family didn't fill that out. And.
They had to, they have to do a, so if they do have like assets or a home or a vehicle or something like that, then they have to do a spin down. First, so like anyone that's medic, like is gonna be applying for Medicaid, they have to have less than two thousand dollars. To apply for Medicaid. So if they have like a house or whatever, then they have to. Basically sell and then they have to spin down to where they're, they only have like two grand or less. Yeah.
Cause I, I know in the past and I think. That we remember that there was, they didn't fill it out. And then they didn't, they weren't submitting any pay.
Well, yeah, and then that's how they get denied is because then, like, they know what you have because you have to. You know, and then if they don't submit it, then they're kind of guilty by.
Yeah.
By default, just because they didn't, you know, provide, cause they do have to have like three months of. Bank statements, any life insurance, any, you know, that sort of thing.
And I better understand that. So when we have someone that wants to come into our facility, is it our. Responsibility to help them? Get Medicaid? Or is it the family themselves? So. Cause I'm just wondering like on what you sent us, like number fifteen is an example. Like there was no follow-through on the Medicaid application and approval. So is that? Because we didn't do our job. I'm just trying to understand if Medicaid is out to look for the best interest of the. Resident versus the facility. Is there any way to say?
So that's why like some facilities have like either a Medicaid like cap. Where they'll say, you know, we have forty-five beds and so many of those are Medicaid, you know, like Medicaid. Which would not be good in our situation because twenty-two of our beds are Medicaid and seven are privately. So, you know, most of the people that we have up there as like a payer or the main payer source up there is Medicaid. Um, so that's why it's not necessarily that you have to um. That it's definitely like the facility, I mean, like there's no written rule of the facility is the one that's had to do that, but because. When like Sam got in there and I was in there and we were looking at it, like they were just taking people. Like from the hospital that were like, oh, they're Medicaid pending, but then no one said like. Did you fill out your application? Did you submit it? Like there was no, so they just kinda took their word for it. And then there, there's no documentation or proof for it, then that's how they've gotten like bit. Because the family's like, oh, we're Medicaid pending as the payer source in PCC, so they're not paying anything in. And then if no one's following up to make sure the family's actually submitting, so that's why we were like, okay, anyone that's Medicaid pending. Before we accept them, the family is coming in, filling out the application. And it being mailed in before we accept them, because in the past, they were just accepting them. And then there was no follow-through on making sure this stuff was done.
Yeah.
So Sam, obviously by, by this example, has. Corrected the issue and helped this person become Medicaid approved. Is there any chance? Of going to Medicaid? With proofs prior to that to collect that forty-six thousand and some?
Well, because probably when Sam did get her approved for Medicaid. Then they, like when they send like their approval letter, then on that letter is. When they say we will backdate this to this. Then on that letter is when they say we will backdate this to this time.
I I really think we still go to bat for some of these.
Yeah.
Every day that goes by, we're.
But then there, it's like, you know, it's kind of like. I don't know that they're gonna be like, well, you accepted them knowing they're Medicaid pending and you did nothing about it, making sure that they were gonna get there.
That's possible, but we still need to go to bat.
Yeah, that's, see, that's what I was hoping, like.
And if the family never, I mean, like if there's no documentation or proof that the family even attempted, then they're just, I feel like. I mean, we we can, but there, I mean, I feel like they're gonna be like, well, that was a risk you took, taking on someone who was Medicaid pending.
Well, and that's what it's like, there's several, like, if it was, if it was my mom and I'm the POA. I have a certain responsibility too, along with you as the nursing home. I'm just wondering if we can't get. Together and collect, I mean, cause some of those balances per person are are a lot. Like, it's not something you can just write a check for, like, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So just kind of curious. So Sam is on top of this list and following.
Yeah, I did that cause she was off last week, so I made all the calls knowing that we were gonna.
So that's a good move of progress. That's great.
Yeah.
Yes.
A lot better than.
And like I said, just now, we've kind of changed where we don't just accept someone on the face of they're filling out their application.
Yeah, it's a world delivered, you gotta.
Yeah.
Pay to play. Yeah, I mean, it's it's tough. The Medicaid is pretty, it's pretty aggressive now, so that's, that's better, right?
It's like a hundred dollars more than our private pay.
Yeah.
I think so. I filled out that, um, the child letter that you guys needed and then that was sent to Mark and there are some other things that. They needed, but it was from inside groups, so they were gonna send them.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me finish business. County council updates?
Uh, I don't have anything today.
Did you ever get a response back from that AA EDC or on the vendors?
Because of the holiday, I'm gonna make that call this week.
Okay, cool.
So it's a chance. My guess is not next week, the following week, I have somebody here. This is all holidays and New Years again, so. But I'm I'm gonna make that contact, I'll probably do it today.
Okay. Perfect. Any need for executive sessions?
I think we'll need one next week for the one bit.
Okay.
Give me fifteen minutes.
Okay. Approval of expenses, uh, do you have a motion to approve this week's expenses?
Say.
Okay, it's been moved in second and all those favors they had.
Bye.
Bye. This is three to zero. About eighteen more minutes. Yes, ma'am. Probably tell you, I don't know. Going to be covering you. This will be more or less.
No. I just wouldn't do.
So I, I was thinking, I was probably well, you know that, so. So I, you know, I don't know, they have, there is someone hiding, so. But I'm not real sure. How much is gonna be coming, you know? Like I used to come to every county commission movement throughout. The years I've been covering the county, but then that changed. Workforce and all that, you know.
Well, congratulations, but we'll miss you.
Thank you.
At least we learned not to get Medicare advantage.
Well, that's very important. I had already heard that, yeah, so.
Very, named very inappropriate. Should we just have, should we do workshops?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do, so we don't have eighteen minutes with this.
Yeah.
That time, so I would look for a motion to adjourn into a workshop. Okay, it's been moved in second and all those papers they had.
All right.
That's three to zero.